Five thirty, I'd like to call this meeting of the school board together with again by a pledge of allegiance.
No termination of quorum.
Oh, pardon me. Yes, that is coming before a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Clark, do we have a quorum?
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum, all members are present.
Let's have the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here, welcome to the February twenty-second meeting of the Fairabout School Board. Step, item two on our agenda is to approve the agenda. So, there is one proposed change that I agree with, and that is to, in under item ten, other matters, to switch items C and D, moving a discussion and approval of the elementary boundary guidelines in front of approval of the elementary boundary revisions that commence in the 2016-2017 school year. So, we're just switching items C and D. If someone has further comment about that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. It is approved. Item three, recognition of awards and presentations, and we have a presentation from Sedexo Incorporated and Affiliates today.
Good evening. So, I brought here today, we have Tina Lenkis, who's our district manager, and we'd like to present a check to Todd Sesker if he would accept it on behalf of the Fairabout District.
Fairabout High School.
It is a big check, and he's gonna promise to take it to the bank, but one of the great things we did was we did win $2,500 for winning first place for combos, so this in coordination with the SHIP funding that we're looking to do, we are looking to add a cyber cafe to a corner of the high school cafeteria. So, we wanted to find a way to really give back to the students for their great participation and supporting the award that we were able to win. So, again, over 200 schools participate, and we got first place for combos. So, it was great for our first time being involved with this, with this great Sedexo program. It was really nice that we were able to play so well. So, we are with the tables that we're adding, we are hoping to add about forty spaces as well. So, it is standing tables, so it won't be a seating per se, but it's more of the healthier standing type thing as sometimes students are sitting in classes and things like that. So, it's kind of a new way, and that's why it's also supported by the SHIP program as well. And there's some other fun events here in the front side I just wanted to pass out, and those are for you to review, and if you'd like to attend any of those, we'd love to have you, so. Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you both and to your organizations. Seems like things are going well. We appreciate it. All right, that would bring us to item four, community comment. Any citizen that would like to speak is given a three-minute limit per speaker and a fifteen-minute limit per topic. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening?
Hello, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Becky Kylin, second grade teacher at Roosevelt and parent of a seventh grader at the middle school and second grader at Roosevelt. I just wanted to say a couple of things about how much I've appreciated having my children at school with me. Michaela went all the way through Roosevelt, it was a joy to see her at school each day. And now, and we have always been in the Roosevelt boundary, so it's never been something I've had to bring up in the past, but according to the new boundaries, our neighborhood, which I haven't quite figured out why yet, the Sunshine Sunbird area has been shifted to Jefferson. So, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate, there's so many reasons, but to keep it short, having my daughter there. Right now, I'm lucky enough to see her across the pod. When she's doing a Reader's Theater, I'm able to go watch it, when, you know, things like that. But one of the main things, of course, is I'm not a teacher that leaves until four-thirty, five o'clock most days. Having her there with me, I can get her started on homework, we can, she's there interacting with a couple of the other parents' kids, always doing a great job, always doing what they should be doing, and I don't have to leave until everything's done and then some. I'm definitely there longer, I'm going to be the PTO president next year because I am also a parent of the building and a teacher in the building. If that's not the case, you know, I want that parent piece too, and it would be hard to try to do that with two buildings. So, just want you to know how much I appreciate it, how much it means to have her there, not only being able to be there before and after school with her there, just being there when we have a concert. I take my class to watch the concert. I don't have to have a substitute, I don't have to leave the building for her concerts or anything that is a Roosevelt thing. I'm already there, so that's taken away a lot of substitute time that I would have to take to travel to other buildings to see her. So, just some things I really want you to think about, right down to how much it means to me at lunchtime to get a hug when I've had a challenging morning, it rejuvenates you for the whole afternoon. So, it just means a lot to have your children right there in the building with you and be able to be involved in all of their activities. So, thanks for considering that, and we really, really, and I know many other staff members, really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on any issue? Well, there seems to be no rush to the mic. Thank you. All right, we will move on. Next item five is the consent agenda. These items can be approved by one motion unless a board member would request a separate action on any of the items, minutes, employment, additional assignments, and authorizations of payments, transfers, and investment activity. Any requests? Hearing none, I'll consider, ask for a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Clark, would you read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes seven-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Brings us to item six, a report from the Curriculum Committee, that meeting held on February eighth.
Good evening. We had our meeting on Monday, February eighth. We talked about the integration grant. Heidi gave us an overview to discuss what was in the integration grant because that is a grant that goes for three years. We made some minor changes to them, in things like Avid, our CAS program, many of our after-school programming programs. And so, she did update us on that and again reminded us about the grant that we, the Bush grant that we rewarded, and pretty much just updated the curriculum committee on that. Maria came and talked about technology, she talked about the possibility of an MDM in our future. And then the other discussion that took up probably the majority of the time is the discussion about the academic honors, which is, looks like it's next on the agenda, so I'm guessing that we might want to go a little bit further with that right now. So, there has been a request in the past, any student that would go to, would be, that would be a foreign exchange student was not allowed to be a valedictorian or a slutitorian because they would end up getting Ps when they came back. And so, with the curriculum committee, we had the discussion about the idea that it is really not logical to disqualify students to go to Germany and other places because we want to encourage that type of situation. And so, having said that, there is a request that we change, and you'll see that in your minutes, that we will make a change that will allow our students to be considered for valedictorians, slutitorian honor graduates, that we would not penalize them by excluding them for those honors. And I don't know, Tom, how we're proceeding with this, so I'm electing towards you because it seems to be next on the agenda also. So, there is a request, and Dawn was gonna come talk about it, but she's unable to be here tonight. And so, it's just adding a sentence at the bottom, the only exception would be for a foreign exchange experience that would have multiple past credits, that we would allow them to have those Ps and still be able to be a valedictorian, a slutitorian, or an honor graduate.
So, would those be like, what numerical, they'd have no numerical value?
And the rationale for that is that the grades don't translate to our typical grading system, and so, they would receive, when they go to Germany and et cetera, all the grades that come back would be pass or no pass. And so, we don't want to have to try to analyze the grades to determine whether or not that's acceptable to the US standards. And so, the idea behind this is that, you know, we want to encourage students to go.
So, we just would have less credits total that would be considered towards the valedictorian?
Yes. And the curriculum committee highly recommends that we do make that change.
Any comments by board members?
I'll add a comment just related, not specifically on this, but it led to a related discussion about the system of valedictorian, slutitorian, and the honor system. Apparently, a number of high schools around the state are moving to a system that's more like college system, which is a summa cum laude, magna cum laude, and a cum laude, and so, there's three different cutoffs, and that's typically what colleges do, and apparently, high schools are doing it. And there was some discussion about whether or not we would like to move to that system as well. At this moment, you're either a valedictorian, which means typically for the last number of years, it's a 4.0, so any A minus sort of takes you out of that and puts you in with all the gold cords. And the thought might be that the other system might help to give a few more distinguishing connectors there. So, it's a futile discussion, it's not up for looking at tonight, but as we were talking about that, that was coming up, and so, I thought I'd give a heads up to anybody else on the board that maybe curriculum committee will likely be having that discussion soon.
Yeah, we intend to bring it forward.
And if I could, speaking as a parent of a student who spent her junior year in Germany, anything that we can do that recognizes the quality of the benefit of that kind of experience and doesn't penalize a student for, you know, being willing to take that kind of step, I think is a positive thing. So, I would, my own personal view is that this seems like an excellent step to take.
Not to be stickler about this, but is, are there cases where students don't pass classes when they're abroad? Or, I mean, is that considered, or, I don't know.
You know, they, to be honest with you, my understanding is that this is kind of the first time that we've had this experience where we're, where we have somebody that could be considered valedictorian that has come back from, you know, a foreign exchange experience, and so, I'm not sure, you know, how that really plays out in other arenas. We are starting to see more kids become foreign exchange students than we have before.
And I totally, I mean, I support it as well, I mean, obviously, those students are working very hard overseas, but I just thought, I guess, was it possible that someone could not do well when they're abroad and then they would just get a pass for that time, but maybe that's acceptable to people because they've been there and they're, you know, stupid there.
I think the no-pass might cause that, yeah, to be a problem for the valedictorian piece, possibly.
A concern was raised at the meeting about this change here will change the rules sort of midstream, you know, for seniors who are graduating this year. And I think that the feeling was that the way it has worked out, nobody, for instance, a person who might because of this become valedictorian will not be displacing anybody else because in general, it's been anybody with a 4.0 are all co-valedictorians. So, there's no indication at all that, that this would change the rules in such a way that somebody would be eliminated by changing the rules, which was a concern for me. Nobody should be, had been working, following the rules, and now, I don't get an honor because the rules changed in the middle. That doesn't seem appropriate, but nobody would not be getting gold cord, nobody would not be valedictorian because of this change, but it would include some others who seemingly also have worked hard and deserved and just went abroad, and it seemed like the right thing to do.
So, previously, by them going abroad, they could not get gold cords, even gold cords left wing?
Right.
Well, it seems that, and rightfully so, I think we've blended item A and B
That's what I'm, yep.
under number six, and unless there are further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the academic honors update as stated in our materials.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of approving academic honors as stated, to allow the exception of foreign exchange student experience, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, it passed.
Thank you.
And thank the committee, and especially Ms. Podansky, if you get an opportunity. All right, that brings us to item seven, the Policy Committee, and according to my information, there is no report this evening. All right, then that would bring us to item eight, the Finance Committee, which met on February eighth. So, we have some Finance Committee members who would like to speak.
Well, Mr. Sesker, I think overall, we are going to go through the items one by one. I don't have anything additional to add from the meeting.
Okay, but it is, through, all of these items were approved by the Finance Committee. Okay. All right, well, then, it brings, the first item is the Jaguar Communications Contract. Perhaps, Mr. Sesker, you could review that for the audience and for the record?
Yeah, it's just our lease for internet access with Jaguar.
Mine's not popping up, or I'm not getting to it. Are there any significant changes since last, this has been our provider for some period of time?
Just since last year, yes, since our second year with it, and we've had good experience with them.
But Todd, help me out, this is strictly for the new grounds building?
Correct. Yep. Yep, and a lot of this will be able to, will offset with our E-rate dollars, so.
Okay, so, just reviewing quickly here.
Again, for those that don't know where the new facility building is, it's where the old, what was the name of the company that was there before that?
Southern Minnesota Woodcraft.
Yeah, Southern Minnesota Woodcraft, over by, between Jefferson, yeah, between Jefferson and the middle school.
All right. Any further questions or discussion on the Jaguar Communications Contract? Hearing none, entertain a motion to accept the contract as entered.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of accepting the Jaguar Communications Contract, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passed. Second, B-two is the McKinley Preschool Request.
And that request is a little bit of a change, we haven't done this before, but I know that, talking to Christine Gorman and Anne Marie Leland, they would really like to try an all-day program. A lot of schools do that, and you can see what the cost will be for that. We do have some money in our Community Education Department to try this out for a year and see how that ends up going. But they're asking, and this comes out of Community Ed, it does not come out of the general fund, just so you're aware of that. But their, the cost estimate's about $15,500 for that first year. And as you get more students, obviously, that, that comes down.
I think we had a presentation of the Finance Committee, and it was, I thought, very good, talking about adding this to our offerings for students and parents to have an all-day preschool with wraparound daycare. It's a great opportunity to be able to offer that to students, so it's a pretty positive program that they're trying to get out.
Yep, there is a cost for the teacher in there too, the $32.5, and then the $9,500 for some more classroom chairs.
And the reason this is now is because of kindergarten, or pre-kindergarten registration, correct, for next year?
That's correct.
They want to do it at this time so they can get, help parents plan and enroll their students.
So, this is actually for next year?
It is, yes.
Okay, that was my question. All right. Further questions, comments about the McKinley Preschool Request? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Item four, B-four, the integration budget for fiscal year 2017.
Maybe back up one more.
Back up one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped, I skipped the McKinley. Backing up to B-three, there is a request for a paraprofessional at McKinley. And, here we are.
And you can see this, this is, you certainly ask, if you want to ask these guys questions, you certainly bring that. This is part of the IEP, and it's a paraprofessional that we have to hire for, this person. The cost does not reflect the offset of special ed. We get about fifty-six percent? Fifty-six percent would be offset by special ed. Oh, thanks.
Okay, so the estimated cost was roughly $9,050 some percent. It says fifty-three on.
It's fifty-three, I apologize.
Is reimbursed from state special ed. So, $4,500, give or take. All right. And this is in support of the previous item, correct?
No, this is a separate item.
This is a separate.
Yep, that we need for this particular student.
And this would take in, come into effect immediately, or that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any questions, conversation, comments? Notice, I'm just noting, remembering it as I noted here, that there have been addition of several students under the age of three in the last month, and this paraprofessional will contribute to the safety of all those students. Any other further questions or comments? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor of adding a 4.5-hour paraprofessional time to McKinley, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we get to the integration budget for fiscal year 2017.
And, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Heidi and Colleen come up to talk a little bit about this. I can certainly talk to you about it, but these two folks are the ones that have really done the work with this particular budget. It's a pretty large budget, and it's really accomplishing some very good things in our district, so.
We are in, I'm hiding on this, we are in our third year of the current integration budget and cycle. And so, next fall, we will begin writing the next three-year budget, and we're working with MDE rather closely for any changes that'll be upcoming for the next cycle. We are qualifying for a little bit more money next year because of our protected class numbers are going up and the formula that they use, so that was a nice surprise as we were working through the budget you have in front of you. We put a little bit more money into our parent engagement and involvement piece, district-wide. That has been kind of a common theme that we've wanted to work on, and so, this will afford some more opportunities in that area. And then, the rest of it is kind of spread out throughout the other areas. So, within the budget, our Avid program is almost fully funded through integration currently. Some of our parenting classes that we offer, some of our after-school programming at the high school with CAS, and that's more of a college access, including this year, we added free ACT prep sessions for our high school students, and also our homework help at the high school, and a few other small programs too. It also includes some activities with Waterville, Elysium, Morristown, who is our partner district for integration. If we didn't have them, we wouldn't have our integration dollars. And that partnership is becoming stronger every year as they move forward in Avid for themselves and some of the other programming that we're doing with them.
Well, I feel very comfortable with your report and substantial data here in the program that I've seen. Since Avid is such a big part of what we're doing with integration, I wondered if you could just, for the public and for general information, describe that in a little more detail.
Sure. We, when Avid started, it started off in our eighth grade, an eighth grade elective class. And so, since it started five years ago, it has grown from sixth grade to twelfth grade. And having an elective class, six-twelve, and then also this last year, our elementary schools, the teaching staff asked to be a part of this, and at the elementary level, it's a little different. It's more of a school-wide approach, and so, all three elementaries are working on their implementation year this year. So, moving forward, really, we're ultimately a district, Avid, working district right now, I guess. And so, Avid itself is geared towards kind of first-generation college students, students that are kind of in the middle, that need that extra support to get to where they want to go. And it's not just about college readiness, it's, we also really focus on career readiness. And so, the element, like, one example, at Lincoln Elementary, not too long ago, they had a career day in their fifth grade where they had people from the community coming in and talking with their fifth-grade students and doing some demonstrations, was very involved. And we're starting to see that, especially at the elementary level, just that talk of their future, having a future and seeing what's out there and bringing that into our system. And then, we have our first group of seniors this year, and it's been a really incredible year watching them. A couple of our Avid seniors were soccer team captains, our dance line, three of those captains are Avid senior girls. There will be eight gold cord members out of the Avid senior class. And they're gearing up today, we were working on FAFSA, the Student Aid for Going to College, right in their class. And it's a good support for them that maybe don't have it outside of school, and so, we work on that in their classroom. And there's a lot of support with the counselors and our career center, Mary at the high school, et cetera.
Think you have one going to the state wrestling tournament, too?
We do have one going to state wrestling, too.
There are many, many success stories coming out of Avid, and Heidi, I have the opportunity to listen to Heidi share them with others, and, you know, if you have not seen this program in action, the tutorials and just the way the staff has embraced this, Heidi's done an amazing job with the whole integration brand.
And our goal is that it'll affect all students, even if they're not in the Avid elective class, that those supports are still there, like the ACT prep courses that we have going on. So, it's not just that select group of students, but that really moves to all of our students have those opportunities and support.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions. The $634,000 is all state aid?
It's all a formula base, based on our people count and then.
Yeah, we don't, that has nothing to do with any levy that we're.
It's a local levy, too.
So, it includes the levy and state aid?
Yes.
Do we know what the breakdown of that is?
Thirty-seventy.
Thirty-seventy, seventy state aid and thirty levy, okay. And I assume Waterville, Elysia levies as well to provide some. And I'm very familiar with Avid and what it has accomplished and what it can accomplish. And I know you've made some presentations in the past. I'd like to request that we have a report on the expected outcomes and how we've met those outcomes. I know that we've had success stories with students, as you just indicated tonight, and that's wonderful. And you'd be commended for that, but I'd like to see a more comprehensive report. You know, $634,000 is a pretty hefty expenditure, and it. And it encompasses more than just Avid, encompasses a parent program. I'd also like to see what are some of the activities that we have in partnership with Waterville-Elysia and how we're integrating that. Um, and what that all means as it relates to the purpose of the integration grant. Um, and why integration dollars were even began, were allocated from the legislature to begin with. Uh, and I know that a few years ago, there was some real controversy about how those dollars are being used. Um, so I'd really like to see, um, if it would be possible, a comprehensive report on, you know, what are our expected outcomes? This is a budget. I'd like to see the program description, what are the expected outcomes and where are we in meeting those outcomes? If we have a three-year picture, we should be able to have some, some idea, uh, of where we're at in this process and where we need to go to, to grow further, so, thank you.
Yep, we're in the middle of kind of collecting all the data, so we have that to put, bring forth too, because we need to see, you know, is this working? Especially if we're gonna be rewriting the grant for next, the next three years too.
Thank you.
I'd like to add on to Mr. Robichaud's request in that when we hear more about how successful Avid has been, and, and I have no question about its success, I've, I've heard many stories from many people. But I, as we're looking ahead to, uh, a long-range facilities and, uh, looking ahead at trying to structure our district in such a way as to achieve the most possible success. If you have any suggestions about what we might do differently to promote the success, not only of our Avid students, but of everyone, but particularly as it relates to the Avid program. If students are taking or getting that Avid services. Does, you know, what are the consequences of that? Does it limit their electives? You know, I'm, I'm not saying that it's not a worthy trade-off, but perhaps there is something we can look at. Uh, we've had talk over the last several decades about all, changing our high school schedule in some ways. So, if there is any connection or any suggestions that you might make that would, um, allow us to deliver Avid and increase opportunities for all students, I, I guess I would like to hear that.
And, and we have done a little bit of that, we'll probably bring that, we'll bring that back with the report. I'm just, that is, you know, the, um, summer, some of our summer programming that our students anticipated in, but let's, we'll bring that report forward when we.
Yes, I, I guess I'm just asking for your perspective on that, so, thank you.
Heidi and Colleen, do you have, um, any plans to get these testimonials and the statistics you talked about, the gold cords and this and that type of thing? Um, into the newspaper so our community can understand this and, and we can highlight that? Do you have any plans in place or has, I, I'm not familiar with an article being written about this program and the success that we're having.
Yeah, there's been quite a few articles over the last few years, um, from the local newspaper that have been written on just different areas of it. Um, we just got the official release on the Bush grant that we're involved with in our area too, so that will be coming out at some point in the next couple of weeks.
I will say that we do have Mr. Smith here and, uh, it's good timing that he is here to talk about the Faribault Daily News and, and, but maybe that's something we can work on together.
Also known as Jack, he's husband.
Yes. I didn't, you said that, I didn't say that.
That's not a fair question. Only if he wants to say it himself.
Yeah.
Would that be great, I mean, that, those success stories are, are great to hear.
Yeah, and they've been very, very good about when we've called and coming in and showcasing us too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, excellent point.
Mr. Chair, one, um, you know, Avid is just one support system that's out there for these students. Um, and it certainly contributes to the success of those students. I'd caution us to say that Avid is the reason.
Right.
These students are successful, that we want to be very careful. It's a part of a wraparound system we have for these students and I think we want to give the other support systems the credit as well.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Well, thank you both. All right. I believe we need to take action on this budget, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the integration budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen.
So moved. Second.
Okay, have motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item B five, construction finance report for district office and Faribault Education Center. This is a report.
Right, and nothing new to report, same as it was pretty much last month. There are no change orders to speak up and just some more payments to the various vendors, so.
And on time are you?
Every, uh, everything's on time. Uh, the, actually, the FEC, as Kevin reported to me earlier, uh, is actually ahead of schedule a little bit. So, um, they're already starting to paint in the FEC and the sheet rock is gonna go up, it's kind of, well, he's not here anyway, so I kind of give you a facility report. The sheet rock's gonna start going up in the district office area too. They're putting up the brick and finishing up the roof, so things are going very well.
Good.
Excellent. All right, brings us to item eight C. We have an enrollment report from February. Appears that our enrollment is relatively steady with, uh, a decline of twenty students. Am I reading that correct, twenty?
Yeah, mainly the seniors.
Yep.
Mainly the.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six students. Like to read for the record that I was an English major. All right. Any further questions or comments about the enrollment report?
Colleen, what was our projected enrollment?
Yes, in the first column on that spreadsheet.
Is the thirty-eight oh seven?
In the first column, yep, the thirty-eight oh seven. And then we've got that average running kind of in the middle of the spreadsheet because really, you know, all the days get added together and averaged when we actually get the count. So we're pretty close to projections based on the average.
Is there any concern with the?
No.
No, no.
No.
Okay. All right, sir?
Just a, just a comment, Mr. Chair, for the record, uh, our previous chair, who probably has a mathematical background, also had some difficulty once in a while adding numbers.
Oh, so I'm not gonna be able to count on my English major defense? I'd take exception, but, I, and I recall that. I was teaching mathematics today and I reminded my students that the last math class I had was in nineteen seventy. Anyway. All right, we have no report financial. And the next item is item C three. Consider the resolution sixteen dash thirteen, acceptance of gifts and donations. And, um, I can read them here. We have listed, the Friends of Buckham Memorial Library have contributed a hundred and fifty dollars to the Stopps Group for their volunteering work. The Ball Foundation has contributed fifteen hundred dollars, donation for our visiting author program. Carrie Van Der Veen contributing a hundred dollar donation for the robotics program. And Hometown Credit Union, a forty-five dollar donation for the high school students of the month program. So we'd like to, on behalf of the board, uh, thank all those who have contributed, uh, funds to improve our, the experience and the programming for our students. I believe we need to have a roll call vote on accepting these gifts and donations, unless there are further comments? All right, Mr. Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion for approval.
Oh, that would help, yes, make a motion, please, sorry.
I'll make a motion for approval.
And I'll second that before you take a vote.
All right, now that we have the motion and the second, Mr. Clerk, would you read the roll?
Mr. Chair, uh, Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes seven-zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I would also say, I think the previous chair had some trouble remembering whether or not we had motions as well.
Well, I, I did have the roll call written down, I didn't have a motion. All right, brings us to item nine, committee reports. A, insurance committee listed as no report. B, wellness committee listed as no report. Item C, the community education, Anne Marie Leland.
No report, no report.
No report.
Well, it says report online. On the published one, it doesn't say no report. I apologize for that. All right, then do we have a report from the facility committee?
Yeah, just real briefly, um, the facility committee will meet in the, at the middle school this time around. I think we have it down. Let's see, I just want to make sure you have the right dates. And we're going to the middle school.
This Thursday.
This Thursday at, is it three?
Three.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Yep. So three o'clock at the middle school. We're gonna take a tour of the district office and then get that whole thing, then we have a couple of gen items on there, okay?
Thank you very much. And special services, no report. Thank you to all the committees. For making my job tonight easier. Uh, brings us to item ten, other matters. We have, uh, need to approve resolutions sixteen dash twelve, authorizing LEA representative, and I, I do not recall what LEA stands for, learning.
Let, local education agent, and it'd be, in this case.
Local education agent, okay.
It'd be SAM O for our EO, Title III is our EO, federal dollars.
So we have the approval plan or the plan in our minutes, I believe. And we are approving SAM as our LEA agent.
Yep.
All right, any questions or comments? Well, I would like to just say that I really appreciate Sam's help at our boundary meeting, which is an item coming up here that we had last week. And, uh, I think he'll be an excellent, does an excellent job, so, I believe we also need an, a ro, a motion to approve, um, our LEA representative for Title III.
So moved.
Second.
All right, and my understanding is that this resolution also requires a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk?
Uh, okay, uh, Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes seven-zero.
Thank you very much. All right, this brings us to item ten B, the approval of the twenty-sixteen-seventeen Faribault Public Schools calendar. And we have basically two options. One of them was included in your, uh, in your board book materials and the other is option B, which was presented to board members here at the table this evening. The, uh, the primary difference between option A and option B is whether or not we should have school for teachers and students on January sixteenth, twenty-seventeen, which is the Martin Luther King holiday. Option A gives us or does have school as regular, or normally scheduled on the sixteenth. And, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that with the discussion involving that included our ability of our teachers to emphasize the importance of the, uh, the civil rights movement and Mr. King, or Dr. King on, in class on that day. And option B, which treats the sixteenth, the Martin Luther King Day, as a normal holiday with no, or not a, as a holiday with no school. And as a result, ends up extending our school week one additional day in June. Have I stated that?
Yeah, and option B has a couple other things, but basically that's the gist of it, yeah.
Yeah, I think, and as I was, I believe I was told, option B has a, I'm looking, no, that's the same. The teacher workday was the same on both.
Mr. Casper, you said option B extends how far?
One, it basically gives us.
Three days.
Honoring Martin Luther King Day by having no school.
There's a couple of days also in option B, Chad, that we had to designate, so that adds a little, a couple more days. Option A and B are two separate calendars, they're not the same. Um, but they are both voted on and they're, I think the difference was one vote, if I'm not mistaken. And so to try to mediate the Martin Luther King Day, we took option B, which is easier to move days around than it was option A. So, the basic difference is on option B, we added a calendar day at the end of the school year to have Martin Luther King Day off.
But so, so instead of getting done on a Friday, June second, we would then get done on, or the students would get done on Wednesday, June.
Wednesday. That's correct. Yep, and so option A, what that would have, Martin Luther King Day, and the other option would not have Martin Luther.
Can you help me out here? Who took the vote?
Teachers, staff, yep, teachers.
And there was really only like one?
One, yeah. Yep, so a split.
All right, well then, I believe it's appropriate for any other questions or comments from board members.
So which, what are we voting on precisely that we?
Which option?
Well, we're, we would be voting to approve either option A. Which has school as normal on Martin Luther King Day, January sixteenth. And would have its final day of school on Friday, June second.
Yep.
And graduation then being on June eleventh, as I'm reading it. I'm reading, yes.
Oh, thanks.
Or option B, which treats January sixteenth as a holiday with no school. Because of several other changes that I'm not able to pinpoint, but.
Yeah, there's no change, it's just another calendar that they voted on. The only change would be changing Martin Luther King Day to June seventh.
Well, it gives June, January sixteenth as a holiday and the, and we have the last day of class on June seventh, graduation remaining on the eleventh.
You don't see my math skills. Why then do we have to increase the school year by two or three days where we're only adding one day for Martin Luther?
I'm gonna leave that to.
Yep, I tried to explain this again. These are two different calendars, completely different calendars.
Okay, so there's more changes than that.
Yep, and so when the staff, that, we actually presented with four, it usually ends up being with one, but we got kind of stuck with the Martin Luther King Day and, and we had a couple of folks bring that to our attention. And so when we presented the four calendars, we narrowed it down to two separate calendars that were completely different. Some had spring breaks, some didn't have spring breaks, some had days before Christmas, some had days before MEA, all different types of calendars. But they came up with option A and option B as your calendars. Option A, the diff, the big difference between option A and option B is that option A, um, we have kids and staff in school on January sixteenth. And option B, we do not. And I didn't see any other major issue with option B or option A because the, the staff felt that they were both pretty equal. The only thing, the other difference that of course is the last day of school.
And then April fourteenth on option B, I just noticed.
Yep. Yeah, there're gonna be, there's gonna be different things within both calendars.
Perfect.
Yep. Yep.
Question, if we have option A, can the board have meetings or committee meetings on that day?
On the sixteenth?
Yeah.
They, we have, yes, they can.
We have the schools in session.
Yes, and that's okay. Uh, we just have to be conscientious that that's a holiday, similar to like Columbus Day. We can have meetings during the day. We don't have meetings at night during those times, but we've had meetings during the day.
That's usually when we have finance and curriculum.
Yeah, and we can do it on President's Day, you can have it on Good Friday. All those are, you can have, the, those days are legal to have in session, it's just a matter of whether or not you want to fight the politics around them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir?
Um, we have three elementary principals in the audience. I'd like to know, um, what activities are in place in your schools to celebrate Martin Luther King when that day is in session?
Just speaking, I don't think there's some empty hour, like.
I'm sorry, can you come up to the mic so we can hear?
We don't formally have like from administrative, you know, directive or saying this is what you need to do. But teachers at their own discretion do bring up and do address the day. So I don't think we have like an actual like top down or, you know, directive that you need to do A, B, or C on this given day. I don't know.
We would just do it on the other day, there are other reasons why I don't always do that. When we teach it, if we're there, we'll teach it on Monday, if we're not, we'll teach it on Tuesday. We always do those.
So the, the calendar committee, um, when we had the discussion, uh, we had, we had a, quite a large committee that looked at different calendars and helped to curate these too. Their discussion was is that we would have presentations and activities like we do have on Veterans Day. That was the initial thought about why we would have, uh, school on Martin Luther King Day. But, um, we, it seems that that it may be wiser not to have Martin Luther King Day so that, um, some of the community can do activities, um, at families.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, can I ask, how long has it been since we've had, not had school? Let me rephrase it, how, how many years have we had, not had school on Martin Luther King Day?
My recollection, kids have not been at Martin Luther King Day, but we've had staff in there. And since I've been here, I don't think the students have been to school on Martin Luther King Day. I think it's just been staff. Do you remember that Nicole and Colleen, is that true? I think that's accurate. I can't remember the day that we had kids in during Martin Luther.
So it's obviously the discretion of every district throughout the state of Minnesota?
Yes.
Um, I, I can just speak as a parent. Even though I'll be at work that day and my wife would probably be home with my kids. Um, I would actually rather see my kids in school that day, learning about the culture and, um, and, uh, Martin Luther King. Um, and then having them get done with school on a Friday. Um, quite honestly, I think it's, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to send kids back to school the final week for three days. I, I'm not sure that there's very much learning accomplished those final three days. Um, just my thoughts.
I don't see the high school, or it's high school that presents. All right, I, I'd have a question, would, um, having the last day of school on the seventh as opposed to the second, would that impact the high school final schedule?
No, no, the only thing we're really concerned about is when summer school starts, that's our big piece. And summer school would start, um, that second week of June, so it would wanna be done before then.
Okay. So summer school under, option A would start on the twelfth? And same as in option B?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I think getting to Jerry's point, I would agree that it would be nice to go forward with some, um, direction or ideas, you know, throughout the schools, going down to the elementary schools to celebrate the day while the kids are in session and to have some projects or community involvement. I mean, I know we've been involved as a board with the breakfast, which has been really fun, and there's been some students that were awarded at that breakfast, but it'd be great to have them maybe awarded at the high school, or maybe they did that this year, but I would agree, getting to your point, that if we do have school that day, it would be great to see some activities and projects going forward.
When Todd and I discussed this last week as we were putting together the agenda, my initial reaction was that it's, it would be important to have the holiday in January as a recognition of the struggles that a number of our citizens have engaged in over the last several hundred years for equal rights and it would send a message, um, to our students that we are honoring Dr. King on that day. After considering the situation for a few days, I think I've come to a position like Yvette is saying, that if we can come up with something specific and concrete that we know is going to reach all of our students in terms of recognizing uh, the struggles and the contributions of, uh, some of the minorities in this country over the last several centuries. I think that, if I have that assurance, I think I'm also in favor of what Mr. Wolf was saying about finishing on a Friday. I think that give, there's some advantages to that in a lot, in other areas and, um, having experienced the last few days of school a number of times, I, I know that that can be a struggle.
Chair, I'd agree with what Yvette says and you were saying about, you know, celebrating a significant person in our United States history. And if we're not doing that, I think we're doing a disservice to a very historical individual and the population and the minorities that he represents. Um, a side comment, um, is that, you know, if you take a look at our calendar, and I've gone through trying to build enough calendars, I know the struggle of doing this, is that there's hardly a month that goes by where students aren't out of school. And so if we had school off on Martin Luther King Day on the sixteenth of January, they would come back on the third and less than two weeks later, they'd have another day off. We all know the necessary factor that time on task plays in student achievement. And, uh, the more we have students in school, um, the more opportunities our teachers have to interact and, and teach those students, so. I would certainly support having Martin Luther King as a student contact day.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes.
I bring this up every calendar that, um, uh, with the early dismissals. Again, is that, um, I think they should be in school, we should be able to find time, whatever they use early dismissals for and some other time, but, um, I'll, I'll be voting no on the calendar because of that, not with Martin Luther King, but with early dismissals.
Okay. Any further comments, questions?
Yeah, I'd, I guess I'd just like to thank everyone for their comments, I was really torn as we began this discussion, um, but as, as I've been listening to my fellow board members, um, I've been feeling myself swayed towards the calendar, which keeps kids in school on Martin Luther King Day. And, uh, and within our classrooms, we emphasize the importance of that day. I think in general, kids who are off for the day are not thinking deeply about the celebration of that day. Um, and, and I, I think we have a better chance of, of focusing on the importance of that day, uh, if they are in school and, um, and I appreciate everyone's comments, cause I think it was the comments that helped me, uh, get to that conclusion, so that's all I'll be supporting.
Well, in, in line with several of the other comments, I would note that, uh, Friday, January twentieth is the final day of first semester. And the end of second quarter and, uh, that also, having, not having school on the sixteenth, gives us a three day week, which is, um, I mean, I'm sorry, it should, it's a four day week, but leading up to the end of the semester while, um, many secondary classes are trying to, uh, you know, pull everything together and that sort of thing. I think maybe giving them a day there as well would be valid, so. That's my last comment.
I'll make a motion to approve the option A that's in our board book.
All right, we have a motion to approve option A, which, uh, includes school on January sixteenth and a end of school date of June second.
Second.
Mr. Second to that motion, further discussion? All those in favor of, uh, option A calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
All right, Mr. Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes six one.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chair, just one unrelated to this, have we ever given five to doing a two-year calendar? They're so much fun, one year. Why not double the fun?
This is second year we've tried this, we are having conversations about changing, um, our s- school schedule. And so, um, we, you know, we're real hopeful and, uh, we have a great committee now that is working on that. So our hope is to, to do hopefully, have the next calendar before we start next school year with some ideas of changes in the future. And we're pretty, we're talking some pretty significant changes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we were switching items C and D in, under item ten. So we will go to the approval of elementary boundary guidelines. Now, we've been meeting about this for several months now, we had a public meeting last week. I believe I'd like to ask Mr. Sesker or, and he can direct anyone else who, if it might be appropriate to comment about these guidelines. I understand that we've had some slight modifications since last time we met.
Yeah, we did, and I think, um, the, before the, the process started, we wanted to make sure that the school board had some good input on what those guidelines were going to be for the committee to follow. And, um, I'm not gonna go through each one, you can read each of the guidelines that are on there. And throughout, just like, um, all of our meetings have been throughout this whole entire process, we've taken, we've taken bits and pieces of what folks have asked us to do and, and stayed within those guidelines or changed some of those guidelines in order to get the, um, get the final resolution that the committee has, is proposing to you today. And, um, a couple of those guidelines that did change, one of those was the fifth graders. One of the guidelines that the, the board had set was that make sure that if a parent wants their fifth grader to graduate from their current elementary school, the fourth graders now and they become fifth graders next year, they graduate that same school. There was concern by a parent about, uh, transportation. And so we wanted to go back and rewrite those guidelines, which we've done, to make sure that we accommodate those parents that are having issues with transportation and we think we can resolve those fairly easily. Um, and then the other one was, we, we've talked and through, as a cabinet and through staff about the, and then we mentioned that this morning, or this, earlier today, that, uh, we'd like to have our staff have a choice of where they take their kids to school, affects about sixteen kids in the district right now. And, um, as Becky so eloqu- eloquently, uh, talked about, it is a big advantage for both the district and and for those teachers to have those students attending their own, their own school. So those are the two changes that we've made, all the other guidelines were pretty much the same and we've been talking about those throughout. We just finally have all of them in black and white right now for you to take a look at.
Todd, are, are we convinced back to the transportation for fifth graders, um, so that sounds like they would now be allowed to still ride a bus to that?
To that site, to the middle school site and then get on the bus that they happen to be going to.
And are we, we're convinced by the numbers, you're convinced by the numbers, that that will not push those fifth grade class sizes too big?
Yes, I am.
In whatever schools.
Yeah, yeah, I really am and I'm pretty convinced, I haven't talked to Gary yet, but I'm pretty convinced that it's not gonna cost us any more in transportation for that. I don't wanna put words in his mouth.
Did he write that down?
He did.
But I mean, all of a sudden he got wrecked.
We did have a parent brought this issue and I thought, we had not thought of it to the forum, where she had, you know, to keep her student in that school, she had to use a bus, but she's already riding the bus, so it's not like we're adding a bus, someone who's riding a bus, they just have to ride a different bus to the school.
Right.
So I think that that's great, that we're able to accommodate that.
And remember, it's gonna be one year for this to work, that's the other thing that people have to remember, we're trying to really be flexible with the parents too. There's gonna be some adjusting, uh, but we think it's going to work out fine.
And my only point to that was if we have one fifth grade class with thirty in a different school with twenty, that's we're, I'm not sure we're accomplishing what we're setting out to, but if you're, if you're comfortable or not.
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable with that.
Could you explain that second point again?
The one with the fifth graders or the one with the staff?
The staff.
So right now, staff can choose where their kids go, so if you have a staff member that teaches in Roosevelt, but they live in the Lincoln boundary areas, they've traditionally been able to take their children with them to Roosevelt or to Lincoln or to Jefferson.
Are you giving exception to teachers?
Uh, staff.
Staff, I mean, staff.
Yeah, all staff, yep, not just teachers, yep.
Yeah, I will say, there was, my impression from the committee was that we should not do this, I don't know if other board members felt that or.
But then parents, we heard that, you know, they're right at that line, of course, the line has to be someplace. Usually down the middle of the road, then all of a sudden they got switched and said, well, can't you make an exception? You know? And now we're giving an exception to the staff?
I'm struggling with that too, Richard, I feel like we're asking, I couldn't find the exact number, Todd, a hundred and ninety? A hundred and sixty-eight, is it the one sixty-eight? We're asking a hundred and sixty-eight kids to move schools, um, which was, I'm trying to, let me see if I can find the number of families, which is a hundred and twenty-six families being affected. With a good, I just, with my conscience is saying, I'm asking these people all to move, but I'm gonna let sixteen other kids choose because they're staff's children. I'm having a really hard time saying, nope, we can't make an exception for you, and there were some parents that showed up that, that really struggled. They have kids who are struggling in the school and they know that having this major change could set them back academically or socially. But we still looked those parents in the eyes last week and said, no, we're sorry, we can't make an exception. So for me, I am really struggling with, with this choice that I'm telling a hundred and sixty-eight other families, no, but because you teach or you work in our district, sure, you can have an exception. So I'd like to hear how other people are feeling about that, cause I, I don't know that I can vote. When I'm telling a hundred and sixty-eight other kiddos they have to move.
When, 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 when did this show up, this idea?
We, we brought this up, we, we talked about it at cabinet and brought that for, we've talked about it, it hasn't been black and white, but we, we've been talking about this for almost a month and a half now.
So this would be part of the guiding principles?
If you, if the board approves it, yes.
In, in my thinking about this issue, we were making these changes in in regard to making the best use of our available space and to providing as much opportunity, equal opportunity across the district for all students. If there wasn't a space issue, we wouldn't have reason to be changing the boundaries. What has influenced my thinking is some of the staff comments that I've heard and recognizing the value of being in the same building as your child, having had my children in my building from time to time, or at various points in their career. I think we improve instruction for all kids when we don't force our staff to choose between their job responsibilities, which they do and most of them exceed those hourly demands. But when we force them to choose, do I stay and get my lesson ready? Or do I go to my child's concert, or do I do this, the other thing? I think by making it easier on staff to be both an employee and a parent, I think there are benefits for our district. And the fact that it involves sixteen students out of a hundred and sixty-eight, I think if I'm reading the data correctly here, that's a, a little less than ten percent. And it doesn't have a significant impact based on what Mr. Sesker is saying in terms of class size. I think providing this, I almost hate to use the word perk, but by giving our staff this ability to. but by giving our staff this ability to choose, we improve instruction for their students and their own children and at no cost virtually to anyone else. And I think it's a reasonable exception to make.
Just to clarify my memory of it, you, you mentioned the, the committee and their feelings on the matter. My only memory of that is that they're, they felt strongly we should address it and make it clear black and white. My, my second reading between the lines that they were discussing was, was not clear amongst themselves. They didn't have a strong recommendation one way or the other. They had different opinions on the matter. But they absolutely agreed with that. It should be black and white. That was my memory. For myself, I, 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 you know, I think, I, I, I don't hesitate nearly as much as Tom does to call this a perk for our staff. I think it is and I think it's an important one. And I agree with most everything Tom said. It comes at very little cost to us. These are the folks who put the most time and energy into our kids of anybody in this community. And, and in return for that, I think making their lives a little easier without adding an extra commute to their day, to go to a different school and the transportation issues that, that all of us parents understand. I, I'm okay with that. I think it's a good thing for our staff. I understand the struggles in communicating to many families that they're not going to be able to choose. But if there's one exception I would be willing to make, it's, it's this one for our staff who work so hard for our kids.
I, I, I'll agree with Jason and Mr. Angret, Mr. Casper. I actually think that the sixteen kids is not a large number of kids when you talk about ballpark eighteen hundred kids in our elementary, three elementary schools. I have expressed concern to Mr. Sesker that should it affect class sizes? That would sway my thinking, but I don't think sixteen kids amongst eighteen hundred does. To Mrs. Kylin's point, I do agree that having your kids in your school is highly likely to have that staff member be there earlier and be there longer. I also think it's very important that this is not a teacher perk. I think it's across all staff, whether you're a principal, whether you're a secretary, whether you're whatever. If you're on the school district payroll is my understanding that, that, that this goes with it. And I do worry about, you know, sometimes us versus they type of thing and having the staff and, and the administration, the board type of thing rowing the boat in the same direction. And I think this sends a message that, that we do care about what our staff thinks, about how it affects their family type of thing. And I get it. That's, that's, that's a perk of being a district employee. There's other perks about being a district employee type of thing. Quite frankly, I'm concerned that if we were to go the other way, how many people do we really upset? And it's not about, you know, necessarily upsetting or pleasing, but how likely are we to then shorten their day and, and leave the building sooner, get there later type of thing? So, I'm, I'm fine with this as long as it's all staff. This year it happens to be sixteen kids, next year it could be thirteen kids, next year it could be twenty kids. I don't know. Until it pushes class sizes up and it's an issue, I'm okay with this.
And those of you that are okay with it, are we also okay with allowing the kids to not be enrolled in Kids World? And be playing on the playground or in the library or whatever versus being enrolled in Kids World like the other students have to be? I think that's something that should be discussed as well then.
Yeah, I, I don't know if you want to tie this into this conversation or have that be a separate conversation.
I, I feel more comfortable having Anne Marie and Amanda involved in that conversation. To tell you quite honestly, I don't feel comfortable addressing that right now, Andrea, sorry.
For the comments.
Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll be voting no on this. Strong no. I've had a conversation with Mr. Sesker about, in fact, he did some beautiful research because my son is moving into town, a bottom house, and he's going to fight for custody of his two children. And wherever they live, I want him to go to that school. Would I ask for permission to go to another school, Roosevelt, Jefferson, you know, whatever? Because I think it's better teachers, I think they're all good. They're all capable of blue ribbon schools. I, I would feel, I, it's very strange to say, hey, I'm a board member, I want him to go to X school. This, this is given an exception. And I just can't support it. I just, this is wrong. This is wrong.
Just so I'm clear, this wouldn't include board members?
Well, I don't think the definition of board member is an employee of the school district. I think they supervise this school district.
And are we clear that the choice is to either go to the school, the boundary that, with the boundary they're in or to the building that they're working in? I guess that's something I'd like to be clear on because for me, it's not, I get to choose wherever I go to school. They either go within the boundary where I live or, or to school with me if those are different.
That's, that's correct.
I mean, I am supportive of what many people have said about teachers and the hard work they do and this being something that we can give them. I do think it is worth further discussion, as Andrea's brought up, about before school or after school supervision, if that is an issue. And just maybe to clarify that, maybe that's why the committee was torn. I think there are perhaps differing opinions on this. And so, maybe the boundary committee was torn in some ways because they had input from different staff. So, I guess I would support it, but I would think it would be something that we continue to clarify. I don't know if there is a policy around it or if it's in some sort of staff handbook or something along those lines. But maybe it would be good to have further discussion going forward on how it is handled.
How the, how the staff piece is handled or how the?
Right, right. So, if we put this as the accepting, that we're accepting that teachers can pick, whether students go to school, maybe there's.
Staff can do it, not just.
Staff could pick. Maybe we can look at going forward about that supervision, before school and after school.
Oh, for the Kids World piece.
Correct.
Yep.
All right. If, unless there are other comments, I believe we are at the point where we would be looking for a motion to accept or approve the elementary boundary guidelines as they have been discussed over the last several months. And the, the two differences from what was presented at the community meeting last week are that staff members of the district would have the option of sending their schools, sending their students, their children to the school, their home school based on the guidelines, the, the boundaries, or having them attend school where they work. That's one change. And the other has to do with fifth graders who may, the parents may wish to have them finish their elementary career at the school that they have begun. And so, the district will provide transportation for those fifth graders to the school that they have chosen, should it be other, other than their home, if they get transportation.
Right. Yep, if they want it.
If they want. That's, that's a choice that parents can make regarding fifth graders. All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
And could you explain that, please?
That we do it at the next meeting and according to the legal requirements, that it requires a second majority to pass. So, right now, there's a motion to table.
All right. We have to address that motion first.
It has to be a second and then a vote.
Okay. Is there, looking for a second on a motion to table?
Can I just ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wilson, with that, and I know we're not there yet, but can we approve or would we then table the, the boundary vote as well? What, what, just walk me through your thoughts there because to me this is important.
With the recent changes again that probably take more discussion at a work session and maybe another public meeting of saying, now we're making exceptions for staff and not for taxpayers.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Motion to table are not debatable. They're not discussable, so.
Thank you, sir.
We have to limit any discussion.
I'm awaiting a second on a motion to table. Hearing none, the motion fails. All right. I have one question. And it, well, I'm sorry, it's superfluous at this point, so I pass on my question. I'm looking for a motion to approve elementary school boundary guidelines as have been described several times in the last few minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'm going to ask the clerk to have a roll call vote on this item.
Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
No.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes five two.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right. Then, having changed the agenda at the beginning, we are now at the point of approving elementary boundary revisions that will commence at the, in the fall of the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. And those revisions, again, are included in your materials, have been included in several presentations, are included on some maps in our materials today. For purposes of clarification to the audience, I will say the, and please, Mr. Sesker, correct me if I am wrong, but I believe the major changes involve the Four Seasons neighborhood, students being bused to Roosevelt, the Copaco, I think I'm saying that correctly, neighborhood, students being bused to Lincoln. And I think that's all I recall.
And then the shift, a lot of the, I had shifted counter, are clockwise. So, you've got some boundaries that leak into each of the other areas.
Yes, okay. The, in changing our old attendance areas, we have shifted the map slightly clockwise.
Yep.
And all of this was to address space issues at our elementaries and provide equity in opportunities for our students. And just for the public record, I'm going to read the guiding principles again. That class sizes be equitable across our three schools. The ability to offer programs such as orchestras should be equitable across three schools. The student population should be as balanced as possible around racial and ethnic background, educational needs, test scores, socio-economic level. And that would create a situation in which all three elementary schools are representative of the Faribault community and that transportation costs should be minimized and the one mile walk zone be maintained. So, unless we have further discussion.
Wouldn't it be just something we just voted on too, right? The guiding principles?
Well, the guideline, yes. Basically, we have, I'm reviewing them for purposes of public information. But if we approve these boundary revisions, then the maps, as have been discussed, become effective. So, we, we approve the guidelines, including the exception for staff and the effort to facilitate fifth graders. Now, we're approving the map changes that implement those guidelines. So, unless there's further discussion, I'm open for a motion to approve the elementary boundary revisions commencing this fall.
Mr. Chair, can I, Mr. Sesker, will the, the before and after or the current and new boundary data, the, the graphs you've sent out, will that be added on to our website for, for public so that they can see the, the demographic changes and the EL changes and how those shifts, what they do at each school and stuff?
Yeah, it's already on there.
Oh, that is on there, okay. I, I just see it in my packet. I, sorry, I haven't looked on the actual website. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do think it is worthwhile. I think at the forum, one of the thing that came out to me was people, maybe we just could reiterate where we started with Jefferson and what we're getting to because I think a lot of people thought we were making these changes and didn't realize the severity of the issue with Jefferson. So, I don't know if you would be comfortable just going over a couple of those numbers briefly or is that to labor the point? But I think as a board member, this is a very difficult decision, obviously removing a lot of students. And maybe the community wasn't as aware as we were of the struggles that were occurring at Jefferson.
Anne Marie Leland had been a very involved member of that committee and was expert at speaking to that. And I don't see other members of the committee here tonight.
No, they, they've been through a few forums.
Yes.
They kind of, we, they, we've kind of turned it over to the board and because it is your, your decision for that. The committee's really done a lot of good work for it, but we, we would prefer to have the board speak to those questions. If you have technical questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But I do have a slide on there for the before and after. I can certainly go through that data if you'd like me to, or you can certainly go through it too.
Let's see if I've got. Well, I will say, and then perhaps Mr. Sesker, you can add to my comments. We are facing some issues with growth in numbers in the, the current Jefferson attendance area. And that was placing stress upon our ability to provide equitable programming for those students. And I am not going to claim that we have excess space anywhere. But the changes that we're making provide some balance to all three schools in terms of English language learners, free and reduced lunch students, special education. And so, that was the, the idea that by moving the boundaries, we could relieve some of the space pressure on Jefferson and distribute students based on those representative of our demographic as more equitably across the district. So, is, did I cover it, Mr. Sesker?
You did. And I don't know if you want me to go through the numbers or not. I, I mean, they're right there. I don't know if, Andrea, you want to make some comments because you're really, you live Jefferson every day and what we've gone through, so.
Well, I'm just looking at the numbers and I do think that we as a board kind of dropped the ball on getting that out to the public. I mean, we just kind of assumed everybody knew what was going on. Right here in front of me just says that the EL population at Jefferson currently is forty-seven percent. After the change, it will drop it down to thirty-seven percent. And in comparison to forty-seven percent right now, we're looking at twenty-five percent at Lincoln and twenty-seven percent at Roosevelt. So, there's a huge gap in that percentage. And we're going to kind of close that in a little bit after this change, which will bring Lincoln to twenty-nine percent and Roosevelt thirty-five percent, which is a lot. I mean, it's just a lot closer. We're closing that gap. As well as we're closing the gap in free and reduced special ed and, and other areas as well. So, you know, we're, we're a diverse community and all of our schools. um, you know, we're, we're a diverse community, and all of our schools should represent that diversity, and I think that this change, as hard as it's going to be for these hundred and sixty eight kids that are being affected, um, it's going to be a positive change for everybody in our community, um, so I support this wholeheartedly.
The other piece too is, if I can just interject, is the total number of students that we currently have also at Jefferson. Right now, um, our total number of students at Jefferson is five thirty nine, and I know it's not quite the same, but it's, it still has to be in there, um, Roosevelt's the largest district and they have, uh, four hundred ninety seven students. So, we looked at that too, um, one of the reasons why we have, um, the music and the orchestra on stage, the, it's a makeshift stage that Kevin was kind enough to, to create a wall between the stage and the cafeteria, and I, I did happen to go in there and listen to a couple of kids play the, the violin, they did a very nice job, and, uh, but you still have some of that noise from the, from the cafeteria when they do that. But one of the reasons, another one of the big reasons why we had to look at this was because we, our classroom space was all being taken up at Jefferson, so we've had to do some makeshift classrooms to house that many students. And on top of that, uh, our newcomer program is also at Jefferson, which takes another classroom. So, um, it, it was just getting to be too full.
Austin at this.
Yep, and so that's another reason why I think it makes sense to distribute students to the other schools when they have the space available.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Once again, I think we need to publicly state the members of the committee that put in, uh, quite a bit of time. Um, I think they started meeting in November, met several times and through December, and toured the schools and, and walked them, um, came to our presentations, um, simply volunteered to try to make our schools better and, and spread out more evenly. Um, I think everybody on this board knows there's probably not a perfect answer to this situation. There never will be, not everybody will be happy, um, but I, I think the committee did their work, and, um, we either agree with them or, or disagree with them, but thank them for their efforts. Uh, we also have to thank the staff for being part of this dialogue and making sure that our numbers are correct and our facts are, um, straight and whatnot, and so we thank the staff members and the principals and whatnot. There is no perfect situation, but at least based on square footage, um, we are shifting the, the student population and definitely in the right direction, where the smallest school in terms of square footage now will have the smallest number of enrollment, the largest have the largest number of enrollment, which seems to make sense. With that, I'm, I'm good.
I, uh.
Mr. Chair, I have.
Yes, sir.
A question, so, um, uh, I agree with all the things said, um, this is a tremendous work, um, by a lot of people who, who I think gave us a really good, um, proposal. Um, in looking at the numbers, I, I guess one question came across to me, um, that I, I was hoping, Mr. Sesker, that you could respond to. What's our ability at any of the schools at this moment to respond to, uh, um, uh, to one particular large section of classes? You know, it's, it's never an even distribution, there is, as, as we've said, there's never a perfect solution, but you, you sent out earlier to the board, uh, a very early projection of what class sizes might be at each grade at each school. Um, and, and I don't even want to repeat that out loud, it leads into some of these numbers here, but that's so early, I, those numbers might not pan out. But one thing that began clear as I looked at that was, all those sections, all the grade levels at all the schools look good with one exception to me. It looked like there might be a first grade at one school that looked like really pretty large classrooms for, for first grade. What's our ability, just space-wise, to respond to that at any of the schools? Because it's happening at one school in that projection, maybe that'll pan out, maybe it won't. But it could, I think, happen at any of our schools, uh, given the boundaries, uh, and with this redistribution, um, i- if we end up with a situation, particularly at kindergarten or first grade, or, you know, maybe even a second grade classroom, that starts to get larger than we would like it to be, what's our ability to respond at any of the schools to that?
Well, there, there are a couple of things that you can do. I'll give you the, the easy solutions first. Uh, you can still have more than one adult in the classroom, it's not ideal to have that, but you could double up with teachers in the classroom. All the schools were really built, um, with four sections in mind, including kindergarten, and then when, uh, the state went to all-day, everyday kindergarten, and we were already there before that, none of the elementary schools were designed for that, they're all designed for every other day. So, we're pretty tight, and so the first immediate, uh, response would be, we don't want the same situation that has occurred at Jefferson to happen at Roosevelt and to happen at Lincoln. So we're going to try to keep them in four sections as much as we can. The projections that we look at today and their numbers are numbers, and, uh, when we look at the future projections, our enrollment is declining, it's not inclining. Of course, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, um, based on industry and based on what else happens in the, with our student demographics. Um, but it does show that the, the census does show declining enrollment, so it's not increasing. So that gives you a little confidence going ahead. Now, if we end up with a situation where we do determine that we're increasing students, then my suggestion would be go to long-range facility planning and start adding classrooms. And that would mean a bond issue that you'd have to eventually look at, of course, I don't want to pursue that unless I get permission from the board. Um, but that would be the next likely, um, avenue that you'd go is to start looking at additional classrooms and then redoing some of the things at the elementary school.
Thank you, so is, is it fair to say at this moment, from sp- from strictly a space issue, that next year, if we have a particularly large kindergarten or first grade, it's not as simple at any of the schools as saying?
And I don't know if the committee had a chance to talk with some of our city fathers and mothers about, um, where the city is going as far as development goes, did they incorporate the chamber? Those are things that I think we really need to take a, a, a good look at. Uh, we know there's a couple of industries that are expanding in the city of Faribault, uh, which could have an impact on our enrollment, so I think in the future, we really want to take a look at that demographic, uh, uh, yeah, we know what's going to happen in the foreseeable future, but we don't know what's going to happen beyond that, and as part of that long-range facility study that we should take a look at, so. Again, I appreciate all the hard work that that commi- the committee did, uh, in coming up with a very, very difficult solution to a very, very difficult, a very, very positive solution to a very difficult, uh, issue.
And I too would like to thank, I have it at the last meeting, I'll thank them again, the members of that committee, the members of the staff that put in so much time and effort to try and provide us with, uh, a, an opportunity to, at least for the short term, address some of our space imbalance issues, and, uh, it was a tremendous effort, and I, I, I'm thankful to all of them, and to you, Mr. Sesker, and all those, uh, staff members that contributed as well, so thank you. Mr. Olson?
Um, as part of the facilities committee, I hope that, uh, the board and, uh, facilities committee will take seriously, uh, expansion of our schools, especially in the Jefferson, because that's where a large concentration of immigrants seem to be moving, of course, it can change, um. But again, I don't know if this is going to be a temporary thing, or, or if we add room, then we shift everything back, go back to the old lines, I don't know. Um, i- is this a permanent thing or just temporary? Or is it, that's a tough?
Mr. Olson, I ain't going to only speak on my behalf, but I don't think there's anything permanent. I, I, I mean, you know, you, like Mr. Robichaud said, you know, you, you have a new industry comes into town and they bring a higher, you know, a hundred employees or something, you know, everything's different, you have a new housing development on the west side, or the east side, or the north side, or, you know, apartment complex. I mean, I, I don't think anything can be permanent, and all we can do is, is do the best we can to, um, make sure that things are as equal as equal can be, um, and go from there, and that's just my opinion.
My understanding is it would be, but in effect until a similar process were to occur, if something changed, maybe. Another board might have to take up the question, or, same board, I don't know, but, other board, oh, will probably, hopefully, have to take up that question.
Well, I, I think it's something that the board looks at every year, and if there are issues, we, we do what we can to make decisions that will minimize the, any negative impact, and, um, it's just part of an ongoing process.
I, I would add one further response to that, because I think in, in previous conversations, we as a board have looked at what our space needs, what our facility needs in the city, in a variety of ways, uh, and, and we talked, uh, earlier this year about having an ongoing conversation about what those are, um, with the potential for, uh, perhaps a, a future bond project, and then, uh, I think things like, should there be some expansions at each of the elementaries are part of that conversation. Regardless of this change, I think that is a conversation we need to have, as long as the schools, as active they are, uh, it ought to at least be in part of the conversation, I think that's a good, good point.
I agree.
And, Jim, when you mentioned cart, you know, I thought we were getting away from something on a cart.
Yeah, I hope so, that's, that's the whole idea, that's why I don't want to penalize the other schools for the same thing that Jefferson's putting up right now.
Seems like that we're at a point that everything was on a cart, and I thought, you know, dedicate a room for art and music and whatever. You know, get away from on the cart.
Yep.
How can a teacher be on a cart?
And just for the record, we don't have anybody on a cart this year. We have them on the, on the stage, which has been working very well for our music and our orchestra program, so we do have everybody in a, in a classroom. One's kind of a makeshift classroom.
I agree with you, having taught on a cart, it's not an ideal situation. But I think that's, uh, something that's part of our ongoing discussion about making sure that we have adequate space and facilities and resources to maintain and, and deliver the best quality education as possible. If there are no further, uh, questions, I believe we're in order to accept a motion to approve the elementary boundary revisions commencing the fall of twenty sixteen into twenty seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Given the, the, um, significance of this action, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this item. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Uh, Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself, no. Jerry?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair passes six one.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. All right, that brings us to item eleven on our agenda, other items of information. Um, we have no student representative tonight. Uh, last meeting, I believe, we had some positive comments about a lot of things going on, so we'll hope to catch up with that representative at the next meeting. Uh, school board members.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, you're good, you're good. Well, we'll start down with the other.
I, I, I just wanted to commend, uh, I don't know, Colleen Cardnudo, if it was your group or, um, the administration at the, the middle school, but I have a daughter in seventh grade who is, she's in, um, section seven oh one, and she participated in the Courage Retreat. Is that, is, is that right, the Courage Retreat?
Yep.
Um, and, uh, you know, I don't know how much empathy a lot of twelve-year-old and thirteen-year-old kids have, but she said it was unbelievable, maybe the best thing she's done as a field trip. Many, many tears were shed in her group of seven oh one, and, um, she just said it was just awesome. So, uh, whoever puts that together, I commend you for that, um, and, and she was, uh, just inspired by it, so it was really cool, so. Um, thank you for whoever puts that together. Um, and I just wanted to add one other thing, April twenty first, I think I've mentioned this before, but that, that's the day that, um, the track will be dedicated to Ted Nelson, he will be coming here, um, we don't know if it'll be raining sideways in thirty-five degrees or if the sun will be shining and whatnot, but it's a big, uh, uh, boys and girls track meet that day. Um, and the ticket entrance to Bruce Smith Field, Ted Nelson Track is going to be all redone. Uh, the tin is coming off, the brick is going to go up, and, 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 uh, Mr. Sesker and Mr. Hillbrand have seen pictures of it and whatnot. Um, when we get it finalized, I'll, I'll send pictures around, um, and, uh, shouldn't be an issue with the city once we get a, a permit, and that should just be momentarily, so.
Can we ask Kathy to remind us on that date, place, time?
Do you have local news, like Carolina and all the news, you will, all the news?
We won't have, we won't have Carolina.
Faribault Daily News might be there, I bet.
But is it impressive, he is one of two world record holders from, from Faribault, and, uh, he's the first Minnesotan, uh, first Minnesotan, twentieth American to ever break the four-minute mile.
Definitely ought to get some photographs, Mr. Daily News. All right.
Tom, I, I visited my adopted school, Lincoln, the other was the last week, I think it was Friday, and, uh, went through the school with, uh, Brad Palmer, it was quite exciting, a lot of excitement there. Lot of awards that kids are getting for reading, it's incredible, so a lot of good things happening at Lincoln.
I'd like, I'd like to mention, I, I spoke with Margaret Gare, uh, director at the, um, Alternative Learning Center, and, uh, there was a, um, a student who, uh, was rec- or recognized the contribution of the ALC staff to their, their own educational experience, and then this, was it Mr. Sesker, you, you forwarded that email originally?
Yes, I got a couple of them, which one was it?
The middle schools just threw his meeting with Angie.
Oh, yeah. That is my, yes.
Like to, uh, acknowledge, uh, some hard work out at the ALC as well, and it seems to have been paying off.
Mr. Chair, um, um, last month, we had our organizational meeting in the special ed, Cannon Valley Special Education Cooperative, and, uh, two representatives. And two representatives, one from Faribault and one from Northfield, were there, and as well as staff in structuring the organization of that operation. We will have our second meeting tomorrow night here at the district office, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Sesker in future agendas, that we send out the agenda for the cooperative, we don't have to send out the whole packet, but send out the agenda so the rest of us are aware of what that discussion is and how we're dealing with that. And we can talk about that tomorrow night, to make sure you get a copy of that, Kathy. But it's moving along, I think through the work of Rob and others, a very successful move for students.
The number, Jerry, do they have a number in there?
Number.
School district number?
Oh, we do, but I don't know where it is.
Six zero something, something, something.
And a task ID now.
Well, thank you, Jerry, for that work, that's gotta be a lot of work.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud, thank you staff for the work.
Neither one of the board members show up, we can't hold, you know, can't take a vote, because there's only two of us. So, how many tie votes do you think we're gonna have, every one of them?
All right, other board members, any comments?
I'd just like to add that my daughter participated in the fifth grade lock-in on Saturday night. And I, I just think it's a great thing for the kids to have, and so I know that this stops kids from high school. And then there were middle school volunteers, and then there were adult volunteers as well, and just kudos to all of them for being able to make that happen for these fifth graders, my daughter had a great time. So, I just hope that these are the types of things that we can keep offering the students. The retreat that did at the middle school, it's great.
If there are no other board member comments, Mr. Sesker?
Thank you, a couple of things. First of all, I want to recognize Coach Jesse Armbruster, I don't know if you noticed that or not, but I was at the Section Three AAA Wrestling Meet in Rochester, and he was selected as the Section One AAA Coach of, Wrestling Coach of the Year, so tremendous honor for him. They really did a nice job, and he did a nice job with the program, as do all of our coaches, so congratulations to Jesse. I'm involved in the mock crash planning, we are coming up with a date for our mock crash for the juniors and seniors, I think most of you know what that is. They, they have a crash replica, and they stage it with students and staff to show what happens after a crash involving alcohol or texting or something to that effect. So, we're in the process of planning one of those again this year. We have posted the finance director position on the web, and we are receiving some, some applicants, we think that are very good. I did a presentation in Rochester to legislators, was a lot of superintendents, there's a couple of board members there too. And we presented on some of the hot topics, my presentation was teacher shortage, and what can we do with that? And I showed some data that I can certainly share with you guys too, about the, the serious teacher shortage that is coming over the next few years. I attended the National Association for Superintendent's Conference, and that was very valuable. I've already hit Colleen up with a couple of new ideas from that conference. There are a lot more that I haven't hit her yet with, because she's been very, very busy with the calendar and trying to, to put that together, but some, some great ideas. And, you know, a couple of little things at the conference, there is the Minnesota Breakfast piece that I attended. And Dan Bittman, who is the Minnesota Superintendent of the Year, just a wonderful superintendent up at Sock Area Rice, and did a nice job with that. And then also, it's kind of fun to talk to Gary Prest, I don't know if you know Gary or not. He used to be a superintendent of Bloomington and does a lot of things with the University of Minnesota. And we had just some of that one-on-one talk, just to sit down and pick somebody's brain, a veteran superintendent like that is, is invaluable. Let's see, I'm on a committee at the Minnesota Department of Education to develop a survey, a statewide, it's not a statewide, it's a survey for superintendents to use for principals. So far, superintendents and around the state to, as part of the evaluation, have kind of been developing their own surveys. And this is one that the state is developing with a large committee, including the Principals Association, that it's really a very, very good survey, and I think it's gonna be a, a good one once we get through. We're already doing some demos out there and seeing how that whole thing works, so I'll be working up there. Actually, Friday, I'm up there all day helping with that. And, oh, I wanted to end up with some other good news too. I talked to our mentor, Pam Kennedy helps out with that in the time that she has, she's very stretched with time. But she talked to the middle school new staff that's up there, and she just wanted to get kind of a gauge of how the year is going, if they feel like they're being supported and they feel positive within that building. And all of the non-tenured staff either rated that as an eight, nine, or ten, ten being a good score for the morale, the support, and everything else that they're giving up to the middle school. So, I thought that was just great news to hear from the middle school. And I think that speaks highly of the leadership that we have up there in that building, so thank you to those. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Sesker.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
That's one of the dangers of having your boss go to a conference.
I know.
Comes back with this long list of, gee whiz, here are some things we should be doing, or at least investigating.
Yep.
I'm meeting other board members, I'm gonna be back.
All right. If there's nothing further, I will review some dates to remember. March second, next week at three-thirty PM, a wellness meeting at the district office. March seventh, and I'm trying to, March second is a Wednesday, am I correct? So, then March seventh should be a Monday. Monday, March seventh, seven-thirty AM, a finance meeting at the district office. Monday, March seventh at three-thirty PM, the curriculum advisory committee meeting at the district office. And Monday, March seventh, at five-thirty PM is the next work session for the board at the district office. On Tuesday, March eighth, the policy committee will be meeting at four-thirty PM in the district office. Wednesday, March ninth, at four-thirty PM, we have our school board retreat, which we have been discussing over the last couple of meetings. I've lost track of days, but March twenty-first is a regular school board meeting, must be a Monday. This one will be at the middle school auditorium. And my wife's birthday on March twenty-second, at four PM, will be the community advisory committee at the district office. And April twenty-first, track dedication.
We don't have facilities.
Ah, yes, we'll get that in there.
All right.
I might have it here.
See if my memory is working. I believe I need a motion for us to go into closed session.
Yep, can I just, I have the facility committee, I apologize, I didn't see, see what was not on there. It is March twenty-fourth at three PM, March twenty-fourth, sorry about that.
Okay, and at the district office.
Yep.
All right, March twenty-fourth for the facility committee.
Then we got one coming up this week.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. All right, I believe I need a motion for us to move into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ooh, same sign. All right. We are now, after five-minute break, we will reconvene.